For the fifteenth, two thousand nineteen Board of Supervisors, roll call please.
Layland?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
Gorka?
Here.
White?
Here.
Little?
Here. Would you join us in a moment of silence? Please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Moving on to item three, agenda received is proposed or amended.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any questions or comments for the agenda?
I say under four B, it's a complete count committee instead of connect count committee.
What was that?
It's complete count committee instead of connect count.
Okay, better work. Okay, is there anything else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Item three is claims and payments, resolution A, James?
Yeah, you bet. Claims came out to two hundred twenty-four thousand, one hundred and nine dollars and fifty-nine cents.
Go ahead, go ahead.
It's pretty lower than average. Secondary roads came in at twenty-three thousand, eight ninety-three. We had a monthly correctional facility service charge for seventeen thousand, eight fifty-seven. And then Health Department came in at fourteen, eight twenty-nine. And then the only other pretty large item was the Sheriff's Department that came in at forty-four thousand. But everything else seemed pretty in line, so.
What was the total again?
Two hundred and twenty-four thousand, one hundred and nine dollars and fifty-nine cents.
Okay, is there any questions or comments for the resolution?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, roll call please.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Gorka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. Gonna back up one, public comments, item two on our agenda. Is there anybody to like to speak to the board at this time? It's not a agenda item. Okay, guess that's the reason I skipped it.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to item four. The first one is a presentation. It's Elk Run Veterans Memorial Presentation by Lisa Smack. Come on, come up to the podium and give us your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Lisa Smack and I live at three oh one Marie Avenue in Elk Run Heights. I wanted to bring you a presentation. We've been starting to work, we're doing our preliminary work on a veterans memorial. We have a committee together and he had checked in with Veterans Affairs, VFW, AmVets. This is our starting place to look at funds for our veterans memorial in town. Are you guys interested in pics of our park total and the project altogether, or?
Yeah.
Sure, okay, all right, so.
Did you talk to the AmVets about this?
We don't really, you know, Elk Run doesn't have its own AmVets.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Why don't you, why don't you become a part of the memorial down at the, in Evansdale and make that? We're gonna be making that nicer within the next few months, rather than putting another one in a small town, make it bigger and.
Because we'd like to establish ourselves as our own entity, because we are our own town.
Okay.
I'll just, I'll show you guys a quick, we've added a major project going on at our Mayor's Park in town. Mr. Frederick, the veterans memorial we hope to put in is right here, if you guys would pass.
Yep.
And then a couple of that money, of the actual site.
Thank you.
We have a grant that we just received from TAP to put a trail all through the park and then the trail would come through our veterans memorial with a specialized walkway through that area. And then we've received, we just received a land and water conservation grant for native planting and creek beautification. We're gonna clean up some of the creek area and put in seating. So then we have a city match on the TAP portion of that for our twenty percent, but that was a, that's a five hundred thousand dollar, little over five hundred thousand dollar project that will start next summer, so. Actually, six hundred total with, I guess, both grants. So we're committed to fundraising and working on this. We plan some fundraising in town. But I just know that your guys' grant or asking process has changed recently, so we're wondering if we would fit into that.
The, are you talking about the ones that we do during our budget process?
Yes.
Usually that's for our nonprofit five oh one C. Is your group a five oh one C three?
We have not established that yet, since it's, I guess it's, I mean, we're in the city, it's a city committee, so yeah, I guess we would be.
What's your goal for?
Fifty thousand for this. Yep, that was our architect's initial estimate on it, so.
Are you gonna be applying for any more grants?
We are looking around at other grants. We haven't, you know, I'm open to any other ideas. We haven't ran into a lot of grants that cover veterans yet, so.
Okay. I mean, usually, what grant is that that takes county support? That's usually when the county gets involved is when we have a, they apply the different cities for a CAT grant, I believe, or something on that lines.
I know there's one that will be last dollars in if you guys have contributed. We have looked at that one, it's maybe tourism? Travel and tourism grant in town. That one, I know if you guys have.
Yeah.
Come in, they'll come in as last dollars.
Obviously, anything to do with veterans is a good program, you know, obviously for Elk Run, Evansdale has done a lot. Understand they've got another project going on in the park where the tank is at. I don't, I haven't heard too much about that one.
Yeah, I mean, that is, Evansdale is, we are a separate city, so we do.
Yeah. Now, the, the money that the board gave Angels Park last year, it wasn't the City of Evansdale, it was the, their association, which is a five oh one C three. Because obviously Elk Run is a taxing district, just like the county is a taxing district, so.
Okay.
But anyway, it's, I'm always pleased to see that people are doing this, a lot of towns are, in the presentation and.
How many people are on your committee?
We have about four on the committee for that right now. We have different committees for different areas of the park. Just so we have plenty of community input on what we're doing. It's a major overhaul on that park, obviously. It's a beautiful park and really well used.
So your grants basically so far has been for the park and the trails?
Yep, trails, native planning, creek cleanup.
Where's this at now? Is that the?
At the old South by Lanes.
Is that the part of that bridge there?
Yes, it's right by the bridge, our side of it. We also, the grant, I don't know if you can, when you look at this map, we included a trail that comes all the way out to Evansdale sided, other side of the creek and then around that area.
That's all in Elk Run?
The south side of the creek is Elk Run, the north side of the creek is Bunker Park, and that is in Evansdale.
What about the, the whole park itself there, Bunker Park? That's half and a half.
No, Bunker Park is entirely in Evansdale. Mayor's Park is all of Elk Run.
Okay.
And that's where the veterans memorial would be.
One thing I know a lot of startup nonprofits do, is getting nonprofit status yourself can be expensive and costly. They use a, I was gonna say, they use a, what you call a five oh one C three fiscal sponsor. And the Community Foundation does that for a lot of groups in our community, so that's definitely a resource to, to talk about. They'll open up a lot of different granting opportunities for you.
So, when you say that, yeah, I just spoke with them, because we are hoping to do a dog park in the Bunker Park side of it. So I just spoke with them yesterday about getting onto one of theirs, piggybacking on, so we don't have to do our own for that. So maybe in that process, I should just do the whole park when we look for that, that might be, thank you for pointing to do that.
And it's probably effective, I'm assuming the council and the mayor has been on these grants, they're the ones that actually achieve these grants, is that correct?
I'm on city council and I actually did the TAP grant along.
But I mean, the grants went to the city, not to the committee itself.
No, yeah, they're to the city. We are just really establishing the committees to work on their rest of the funds.
Is there an address for sending a check to?
It would be City Hall at this point, yes.
What's the timeframe on the park itself, not counting the memorial? Because it sounds like you got a lot of different things going on here.
Next summer. We are, and starting the design process this fall when the leaves get off the trees, we're gonna get out there and get that done with our architect and engineer, so.
Does that get flooded? Does that get flooded by the creek yet?
We get a little water on our side, not like the Bunker Park side does. It can come in a little bit in our lower areas, but it doesn't really hit any of the things that we use in the park. It's just water, grass planting is where it gets in.
Okay, is there anything else you'd like to add?
If we wanna follow up, can we find your email on the website for the city?
Yes, you can.
Okay, great.
Yep, all right.
Thanks very much.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And if you have any additional information, you can always forward it on to the boardroom office. Thank you. Okay, then, it looks like our next item B is, what'd you say it was?
Complete count.
Complete count committee, progress regarding the two thousand twenty census, presented by Mr. Brian Schoen, Intercog.
Morning, I'm Brian Schoen, and with me is Lisa Ahern with our staff as well. She's a project manager with our office. And we are working with a complete count committee, got similar conversations in other counties as well going on. And provided a handout and was asked to provide just a brief overview with respect for your time today about the committee itself. And both supervisors, Layland and Schwartz, are involved in the committee. Actually, they were the impetus to re-jumpstarting the committee. This committee has existed since two thousand census, was resurrected in two thousand ten and then now in two thousand twenty. The goal, single-mindedly, is to raise awareness that Census Day is on its way. Typically, April first is Census Day. And so you will start to see a national ad campaign that will be gearing up over the next course of a series of months. And this committee is really trying to dovetail with that awareness campaign that's being done at the national level. Because after all, we wanna make sure that everybody is in Blackhawk County, please gets counted in any way, shape, or form. And that's really the goal of this committee, is to make sure that, number one, that people are aware census is coming, but probably more importantly, to make sure that people actually respond to census. And so, again, really quickly, in the end, many of the funding formulas that we all work in, the equations, include or involve population as one of the factors. And so, very important for people to respond when they get the form. We have been told that the format will be a little different for two thousand twenty, that responses will have an opportunity to do or to respond to census electronically, online, by phone, and then I think there'll still be the paper version. So in about mid-March, we're gonna start to see hopefully postcards, correspondence, those kinds of things that will tell you how to do that. With the idea being that as soon as you can, go in and answer those questions. There are about ten questions, I think, that you'll be asked, same ten questions that we all got in two thousand ten. And then there's a complement to that that goes on, which delves into income and housing and those kinds of things called the American Community Survey. And that's drawn every two years. So our focus of this committee is a group of volunteers. We have about eighty-plus people on the mailing list that are getting correspondence from us, getting invited to meetings if they so wish, to really discuss how do we get the word out. And again, we do, we work with the committee to put together the agendas. We meet on a monthly basis. Those representatives are not only city and county and elected officials, they're also school districts, they're private nonprofits. We've got some business and industry represented as well. We've certainly got media. And that's one of the things that we're really focusing on is, okay, if we look back to what was done in two thousand ten, what are some areas in communities that we really need to focus on in terms of getting those response rates up? And so we're looking at census tracts and trying to make sure that we're targeting them so that they're aware that we really need them to respond to the census. So these eighty volunteers are really trying to work through their, their tentacles in the community and trying to get the word out. So you're gonna see a lot more at the national level. We hope there'll be more at the Blackhawk County level. We're working with a UNI class, is helping with some of the social media and Supervisor Schwartz, I guess, is going to meet with them and work with that in that realm as well. Social media will be a huge change from where we were at in two thousand ten, but the idea being, we just wanna get census word out at the local level, that it is coming, it's not that far away. We'll be there before you know it, and then we will use those numbers for the following ten years. And the impact is pretty significant. There are a number of studies, if you go online, you wanna see, you know, what is the impact of a missed person? You know, census, somebody that doesn't respond or somebody that gets missed. Again, these studies, depending on which study you follow, somewhere between about eighteen thousand and about twenty-two thousand dollars per person over the ten-year life of the census. So, the real dollars, when you're talking about the impact of a missed person, a missed household. So it's really this committee's goal to try and let people know that the census is confidential, it's safe, and go ahead and respond as quickly as you can. So the purpose of today is really just to make you aware that this committee exists, and if you wanna get involved, however you wanna get involved, it would certainly be welcome. Questions or comments?
Board, got any questions for Brian?
I was gonna ask Brian, do you know, as far as the UNI media class, I know you've met with them, I know Chris is planning to meet with them too, or if he hasn't already, what they'll be doing, what types of activities they plan to do to help?
Generally speaking, they're focusing on two areas. One is the social media outreach. Again, they'll be working, as indicated, with Supervisor Schwartz on that, but the other one is a website. Our committee did not have a website in two thousand ten or two thousand that I'm aware of, and we're looking for a website where we can nest all the information about the committee. But likewise, also present a message publicly to people that, number one, go ahead and answer the census, it's confidential, shouldn't take you much time. And it's really important to Blackhawk County as well as the communities in Blackhawk County, as well as to the Intercog region. So we're really promoting that same message in our other five counties as well, too. So those are the two areas. Website and social media is where this class is focusing. We're very appreciative of their time and effort. They have made it really their class project. It is a very high-level class in terms of senior-level students and they have just kinda jumped right in. Our challenge has always been trying to dovetail what the students are doing with what we may wanna do after January first, when the class ends in December, with that information. And then how do we work with potentially a private firm or a marketing firm to keep that going for approximately six months after January first? Because the census will be ongoing, obviously, in April and it's not done. There are the follow-ups that are a part of that process thereafter. And so we really need to make sure that this committee continues on, but, but also that our message continues on.
I can say, I know that their social media goal is to build up a kind of a bank of social media content that we can use. And so they're, they're really good at creating content. They need a little bit of help coming up with what the, what the substance of, the substance is. And so that's what I'm helping them out with today.
Has the area of low response rate, has it been identified or defined?
Yeah. Actually, what they give us is our tracts, and, and one thing, without going too far in the weeds for you, in two thousand twenty now, you can actually go online and there's a predictor. You got a tool that uses GIS, geographic information systems, that identifies tracts where they think that turnout will be low in, in this particular census. In the prior census, we could follow that on a daily basis as it was happening, so it was a little bit in arrears. This time around, there's actually a tool that's predicting where we need to focus, you know, on certain tracts. And the tracts are, are not a surprise, you know, from looking at two thousand ten, but that's really where, I'm sure the committee will probably spend an amount of time, as we did in two thousand ten, getting the word out. It's safe, it's confidential, fill it out, it's important. You matter, you count.
You mentioned the response rate, too, I think, or did you? I'm not sure.
I did not. Historically, Midwestern states have been fairly high, so what they measure then is what's the response rate on the mailouts? And on this case, it'll be the online. So and that number is somewhere typically for the state of Iowa between eighty and eighty-five percent over the course of the last several censuses. Same as our neighbors to the north and to the south and to the east Midwest, again, has a pretty good response rate without that extra push. We, obviously, our goal is to see that be a hundred percent, whether that's realistic or not, is always our goal of this committee, is to make sure that we push that number. But at the very minimum, that we maintain that response rate. And so we're, we're proud of that. We can track it. And now there's a tool that's actually predicting where we should focus some of our time, if we're gonna focus on those, those response rates. And, and those tracts, you know, we're not talking about a fifty percent return rate, we're talking that they're somewhere between twenty and thirty percent that they're predicting will not respond. So that would be in that seventy to eighty percent, so we're just trying to get them bumped up closer to that eighty, eighty-five if we can.
Are there other entities we can partner with to market involvement, like the bus transit services in the county?
Yep.
Some of the clinics, public health?
Yeah, actually, on our mailing list, those eighty-plus persons that are getting it typically are people that are employed with those organizations. And so the idea being, we want everybody to hear the message, with the idea being then that they can pick it up, whether they link it to their social media or we produce brochures via PDF that they can print and put on a bus, that they can put in their organization, that they can lay on a coffee table, that they can put on the appointment table or whatever it is. The idea is just to try and work our way through the community in terms of getting the message out through those agencies and organizations. And if there's any, again, if you wanna see the mailing list, I know we'll supervise or see that, it's eighty-plus. You know, if you think of any organizations just off the cuff, or as you're thinking about it moving forward, just reach out through either supervisor or let, let us know and we'll check the mailing list to see if they're at least getting the information.
Okay, then. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Brian.
Thanks very much.
Thanks, Linda. Thanks, Chris.
Okay, is there anybody else? Okay, then, moving on to receiving project updates from departments and or elected officials. Morning, Kathy.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, county engineer. On November nineteenth at six PM in Dunkerton at the city library, we'll be holding a public meeting to, with the residents concerning the East Bennington Road Bridge. And if you recall, this is the bridge that had the heavy loads pass over it, so we did close it several years ago. We need to think about the long-term outlook for that bridge. What should we do with it? And we wanna get some, some opinions from the neighboring residences, and you would all be invited as well. We'll be sending out notices to the residents probably within two weeks, and then we'll continue to update yourselves as well.
What was that date again?
October, excuse me, November nineteenth at six PM.
But it was where, it's Dunkerton?
Library, city library.
Thank you.
Six to seven PM. And then we have finished hauling mile rack. We're just hauling some spot rack now to get the gravel roads in better condition before the ground freezes. We will start cleaning ditches tomorrow. We've got a long list of farmers, residents who would like us to clean their ditches. It's something we do every year. We'll start on that tomorrow. And then, of course, we're getting the plows and the sanders ready for installation starting this week. Can I answer any questions at this time?
Estimates on how much we spent on rock so far?
Our latest estimate has been, as of July first, we've spent six hundred thousand dollars. That's about sixty percent of our budget. Last time, but this year, we had spent about twenty-five percent of our budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning.
Morning, Board. Mike Kendrickson, Director with County Conservation. Just a quick update, out in conservation, falls upon us and it gives us an opportunity for one last kind of push for revenue out there. And so just wanted to let you know, we've had Halloween weekends in all of our campgrounds. Camp sites have all been packed, almost to overflowing levels. The public really likes those. Hartman Reserve Nature Center conducted their annual Halloween hikes for the little ones a couple of weeks ago, first week of October. They sold out all of their sessions for that, so that was a big thing. And then Thursday night, we start our haunted house. We're on year eighteen, I believe, for that haunted house. It's a major fundraiser for us, too. So we have recognized that fall brings, creates some, some great unique opportunities, recreational opportunities for the public. And our staff does a great job at getting out there and taking advantage of that. So October is a big deal for us and we're a last big push before winter.
Is Blackhawk mineral open?
Blackhawk has been down for about ten days with the latest water. We're, we're hoping that it's gonna get down there and, and get out of there again. I don't think it did much damage this time, but it did, it does get up over the road again, so.
I heard from a number of friends that your tree identification tour was also completely sold out, and so congratulations on, on that as well.
Absolutely, yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Is there anybody else? Okay, moving on to item six, minutes approved for October the eighth, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Any questions or comments on the minutes?
I just noticed this morning, and I mentioned it to Grant, that last week, we had amended the agenda. And I just noticed it in the minutes that we need to change that. The agenda was amended, but the item was still left on there that was removed. That nine C above the permanent parking, that had been left in there, so with that correction, probably.
Okay, make that part of the motion.
Second?
Yes.
Okay, anybody else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Okay, we have a hearing this morning, we'll get to that shortly. It's rezoned request by George Jorgensen and Jerry Harris. Okay, item made is consent agenda, this be made with a single resolution.
Second.
Any questions on the consent? Okay, roll call, please.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Gorka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. Okay, item nine, this is a resolution, the best bid received from Encore Energy Dubuque, Iowa for natural gas transportations. This is for the jail effective November first, two thousand nineteen through October thirty-first, two thousand twenty. Rory, what's the current rate?
We're currently locked in at three dollars and seventy-five cents. We had a estimate as of last Friday at three fifty-five. So after this meeting today, we hope to be able to lock in at that three fifty-five, but not to exceed the three seventy-five.
What is it today, you know?
We don't know today. We'll find out after this meeting.
Okay, so it could be lower than what it's listed here?
We anticipate it to be a little lower than that, yeah.
Okay. Board, any questions?
Pete, is there any problem with me voting on this?
No.
Now, this is, for the public, too, this is an annual thing that we do. It's just for the jail only, and saves us quite a bit, really.
That's one of the lowest we've had in quite a few years, isn't it, Rory?
Well, I think we've had.
Yeah, if we can lock in at the three fifty-five, that'll be the lowest. I mean, we've been as high as, I wanna say about seven and a half, so, yeah.
Okay, do we have motion on that?
Yes.
Okay, roll call, please.
Gorka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. Item B is a resolution, a best bid received from Kitter Construction, Ohio for the veteran affairs remodel project. In the amount of ninety thousand, four, six, seven, be approved, and a certificate of insurance for farmers.
Second.
How many bids we have, Rory?
We received two bids for this project. Kitter was the low bid. Just wanted to kinda run through the schedule with you real quick. After today's, if it's approved today, we will be working on contracts, verifying insurance is met. We have a completion date of February fourteenth for the interior work, and we have a completion date for the exterior work of May first, two thousand twenty. Any questions on that?
Seems like a long schedule, but. Okay, anybody else, Board?
Thanks, Rory.
Yeah, thank you.
Roll call, please.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Gorka?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. Okay, moving on to item ten, other business. This is resolution A, that the emergency purchase of cap equipment, Ben Deli Gardell, to be approved to purchase repair failed meter was for four, four thousand, two hundred and ten dollars and nine cents. This is a part that he needed daily, and I believe the repairs have already been made. But we still need to have it on the agenda for approval.
Motion to approve.
Is there any questions on this? Okay, roll call, please.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
White?
Yep.
Little?
Yes. Item B is a motion, personnel rec for equipment operator one. This is full-time replacement effective October the 16th. Kathy?
Yeah, if you recall, about four weeks ago, we had a resignation. That position was an equipment operator two. We've had three people move internally and now, we're down to needing an equipment operator one.
Okay.
This would be a replacement.
Second.
Okay, anybody else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item C is a resolution, taxes on submitted properties which have come into public ownership through community development efforts, public infrastructure improvement, public purposes. This falls under the Iowa Code of 427.2, 445.62 of the Code of Iowa. Total amount is $7,582.06. Rita, did you have anything you wanted to add to this?
Not really. This is just county and city owned properties that we need to do the taxes on.
Second.
Okay, is there any other questions? Roll call, please.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. Item D is a resolution, taxes on submitted properties be debated under 445.16 of the Code of Iowa. And again, this is for the dollar amount, $4,579.28.
Second.
Rita, anything on this one?
Just things I need to get cleared up.
Very good. Okay, roll call, please.
Delka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. Item E is a resolution, appointment of Jordan C. Rouse, Assistant County Attorney, effective September the 30th, 2019 through December 31st, 2022, be approved and Director Chair to sign for the same.
Second.
Brian, is that date correct? I thought we did that yearly.
Uh, yes, we do. I'm just noticing that, too.
So, it's 2020, is that correct?
It'd be December 31st of 2020.
Yeah. Make sure, who made the motion?
I did.
Be part of the motion then. Is that correct, then, Brian?
Yep.
Thought that looked a little long. Okay, is there any other questions? Roll call, please.
Delka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. Okay, item F is a resolution, the revisions to the building and grounds policy effective October 15th, 2019, be approved as recommended by the Policy Review Committee. Who's speaking on this, Deb? Why don't you hit the highlights on what's changed?
Morning, Board. Debbie Bunker, HR Director.
Morning.
So, this policy was changed to some minor changes as far as the MSDS sheets needed to be referred to as the SDS sheets to be in compliance with that. The policy pretty much just addressed the county as the courthouse, I'm sorry, instead of all the other buildings. So, it was new, it was a more, took out the references to just the courthouse and made it county. So, it includes our offsite as well. And then, the major change was basically to add assistance and service animals in the buildings. So, to be in compliance with the ADA. So, we are allowing service animals and assistive animals. There's a little bit of a difference between the federal and the state laws. The state law is a little more expansive, so it's not just a dog or a mini horse. There are only certain questions that a person can ask somebody if they bring an animal into the courthouse and that is, but they do have to be specifically trained to do a task or be in training to do a task for somebody. So, it's not the same as an emotional support.
Don't they have to be carrying a card, too?
No, they don't. They don't have to wear any identifying badges or anything. That's all you can ask them. And if it's a parent, like, for example, if it's a seeing eye dog, you can't ask them because that's a parent. But if you don't know, then you can ask. We did have somebody try to bring a snake in. I'm not sure what they could have trained a snake to do, but, you know, there's a whole list of things that you can see just by Googling the kinds of tasks that an animal should be trained to do, so.
I know the gentleman that was in front of me going, when I went on to Vietnam Veterans Reunion, gentleman had a service dog and he didn't have his card with him and he was put on the line. So, better check that out.
Yeah.
Can we send, I think we'd probably be wise because we don't wanna get into trouble for someone asking questions that they shouldn't ask someone.
Yeah.
Could we send out kind of a employee-wide kind of memo of do's and don'ts?
That we'll go out with with policy revisions.
Probably more so with security, too.
And it's actually listed in the policy, too, of what they can actually ask. So, if they forget, it's, they can refer to it in the policy.
So, that brings up a question. Does Permar then review that or do we, is that our responsibility to review that?
Well, we'll talk to them. We're, I think, we'll communicate with them. It probably already has. We'll make sure that they get a copy of the policy.
No, my only concern is liability from the other side. If we allow that canine in here and it hasn't gone through a process, the appropriate process, and it bites somebody, what's the liability to the county? Like a child walking up to that dog and it's not their, for legitimate purposes.
You can ask somebody if they can't control their animal, you do have the right to ask completely. That's the only exception.
You meant, it said in there, direct threat to health or safety?
Yep, right.
Okay.
Or if the dog's out of control or the animal's out of control.
I think either way, we're gonna have liability, Dan, in the courthouse.
It's probably something we just need to let our property liability.
Yeah.
Okay, is there anybody else? Did the Board get a chance to see this prior, these changes?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great. Okay, is there any other questions? Roll call, then.
I need your motion.
So moved.
Second.
Delka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. NMG is a resolution, revision of the conflict of interest policy, changing the public contracts of political subdivision threshold from 1,500 to 6,000 be effective July 1st, 2019. This is the past July?
Right, this was something that happened at the legislature where we got this ISAC summary later in the year after, after the session was over. And what I discovered in there when reading that summary was that, that they had actually changed the threshold and we had just updated this policy. So, it's just a minor change from 1,500 to 6,000.
Okay, Board, any questions on that one?
Move to approve. Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. Okay, item H, this is a resolution, the revisions to the non-bargaining compensation policy effective October the 15th, 2019 be approved.
So moved.
Second.
Deb, this is what now?
And this is a kind of a culmination of the last three years of conversations we've been having with regard to non-bargaining. And even at budget last year, we proposed that we would come back with a similar policy. And so, we, this is a follow-through of what we did. We went to policy review.
What's the dollar amount?
Um, well, the dollar amount will change every year, just depending on who's actually.
So, this is by voting for this, this automatic every year?
Well, you always retain the right to.
But I mean, will it come back to the Board each year?
No, no. Every year, you can, you know, you will continue to set, you know, whatever you want the across-the-boards to be. The modified steps that are in here will be what they are unless you override that every year.
Do we need to address this more at budget time rather than?
Well, we'll give you information at budget every year, so if you do want that opportunity.
Is this, is this portion budgeted what we're doing?
Well, it doesn't take effect till July. I mean, it really won't impact anything until July 1st of next year. So, you'll have that opportunity this budget.
And this is what we discussed, I think, during budget to try to avoid having equity increases.
Right, we don't wanna keep bringing those every year, so.
And the Policy Review Committee.
So, it doesn't take, excuse me, go ahead.
No, I said the.
Yeah, we've already done our increases for this year, so this won't actually take effect until, so at budget, when we're looking at our projections, we can give you some idea of what it would cost.
So, it puts this process in place for us for budget?
Right.
Right.
I appreciate your work to come to a policy solution on this problem, so thank you.
But this, this doesn't have anything to do with the annual increase, if there is an annual increase. Like to 3% or?
Well, you will always set that.
The process.
That's across the board, you have to.
It's separate than this one.
It's in the policy. It's always been, it's always been addressed in our policy, so it still is.
Great, well, yeah, I know that.
Okay.
Craig, did you have anything?
I think it ought to be tabled, so people get a chance to look at this a little bit closer myself. Pete, have you looked at this, Pete?
I was on the policy committee we were to discuss.
All right.
You.
I did send it out like a month ago, so I sent it out September 18th for everybody to review.
The, the sheet you handed out today was the one that you sent out?
Yes. Really, it can actually end up saving money because when you bring people in at the lower end of the scale and then progress them up every year, as opposed to bringing them in at a higher rate for several years, it's actually a potential savings. And we really want to encourage people, bring people in lower and then give them a smaller increase to get them up to midpoint.
But the fact remains, we've been seeing the other trend of bringing them in at midpoint.
Well, and there's a reason for that is because people understand that if they don't, they're not, they're gonna be stuck where they're at. So, this will encourage them to actually use the policy the way it was intended. So, if somebody, you know, really has the skills and they're gonna come in and be able to do the job, we might wanna, or if it's a really difficult one to recruit, we still have that ability to bring them in at midpoint, but we don't wanna have to do that.
Okay. Board, any other questions on this?
I don't remember seeing this, Deb, sorry.
It's okay. I did send.
Maybe in the future, just double-check prior to putting it on the agenda.
Everybody's seen.
Then, check with the Board and make sure they had a chance.
I think you sent a couple, I was gonna say the second time, I think, was the 30th.
Just double-check personally with each supervisor, that way they've got it.
Maybe right before the meeting or something that's gonna be on the agenda.
Or a week before, that way they got a chance to look at it.
Okay.
Okay, then, any other questions? Do you have a motion on this one?
Yes.
Yes.
Let's have a roll call, then.
All right. Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. Okay, we are moving on to our hearing. It's 9:42 and this is the proposed ordinance number 77-235, Jorgensen slash Harris rezone.
Motion to receive and place on file, proof of publication.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Motion to waive the first reading.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item three is a motion to close the hearing as oral and written comments were received and placed on file. Was there any written comments?
No, sir.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Seth, it's up to you.
Okay.
That's it?
Okay, oh, sorry. Okay, the Planning and Zoning Commission at its regular meeting on September 17th, 2019, reviewed the request by George Jorgensen and Jerry Harris to rezone 5.8 acres from a agricultural district to AR Agricultural Residential District in order to split off a home site that was originally built on 35 acres and allow for an existing housing site to make changes to their existing property lines. And it's located approximately three-quarters of mile to the west of West First Street and North Union Road intersection. Yeah, it was moved by Nagel and seconded by Wertz to approve the rezone request for 5.8 acres from a agricultural district to AR Agricultural Residential District in order to split off a home that was originally built on 35 acres and allow for an existing home site to make changes to existing property lines. Motion to approve was carried unanimously by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And basically, yeah, it should also be noted that similar request to rezone a home from a agricultural district AR for homes that were originally built on 35 acres at 10615, 10211, and 10721. Mark Roig received unanimous recommendations of approval from the Planning and Zoning Commission at the regular meeting on July 16th, 2019 and unanimous approval by the Board of Supervisors at their regular meeting on August 13th, 2019. In addition, the 15-year waiting period to plat or request to rezone the property has already, has already expired as well. And that's a request.
Was there any opposition?
Uh, no, there was no opposition at all. Basically, these two homes are existing sites. One that was built on 35 acres, so they're basically rezoning it down. And then, the rest will just simply remain agricultural.
How many PNC commissioners were there that night?
I, gosh, I wanna, God, I think we had a full house. It was either.
Yeah.
I think all seven were there.
Very good. Okay, Board, get any questions? Seth, anything else?
No, I think that, that covers it, the audience.
Anything from the party if they choose to?
No, there's not any questions still.
Okay. Well, with that, then, I do have a motion to close the hearing. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries.
Motion to suspend rules.
Second.
Okay, we do have a motion, second, roll call, please.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. Item five is ordinance adoption.
Second.
Any questions on the ordinance? Yes, vote is approving it. Roll call, please.
Delka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Item J is a resolution, the minor plat of survey submitted by George Jorgensen and Jerry Harris to the minor plat of 6.12 acres. And this is located at 7911 and 7915 West First Street.
So moved. Second.
Okay, anything here, Seth?
Um, yeah, basically, yeah, this is just the minor plat for the same property for the rezone. Again, just basically, you know, just trying to, with the minor plat, to break off the home site from the original 35 acres and the rest just remains ag. And the rest just remains ag, and then, uh, just adjusting some property lines for, for another home as well.
Very good. Board, any questions? Okay, we do have a motion on this one?
Yes.
Roll call please.
White?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
Little?
Yes. Resolution carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item K, discussion setting the permanent parking pass criteria for courthouse parking lot and other updates to the parking ordinance. I believe everybody got a copy on the ordinance, if that's correct? I see there's a lot of changes in there. Who made the changes? All right.
Pardon me?
I see there's a lot of changes, Meg, near. Who made the changes?
Um, Dana and myself, uh, went through, have been going through this, uh, ordinance now for a couple of months. And so these are all suggested changes. We just wanted to present to the board.
Did everybody get a copy of this in time to review it?
I think you, you'd sent it previously, but I was gonna say you handed it out today.
And I sent it out, and then Rory is actually going to put it on the screen up here as well.
Okay. Is there any one area you want to look at? I mean, there's quite a few changes here.
You're gonna summarize, I suppose, kind of why or what you changed, what you recommended?
That's not yours?
Mm-mm. Didn't you put it back there?
No. Who's this?
Oh, Jerry.
Now, this, this is an ordinance, is that correct? Or no?
I'm sorry, Tom, what did you say?
This is an ordinance?
Seth took it. Yes. Seth wanted to try to steal that.
All right, then this is, with this being an ordinance, um, we kind of want to, what we generalize in, we'll have a separate policy then for the board to approve or something because we don't want to have to change our ordinance every other week if we change something out in the parking lot.
Right, so, I mean, depending on how this, um, if we decide, if you guys decide to go through with some of these changes, we would pass the ordinance and then, um, set like a policy and procedures to take place for the board.
So this is really just kind of setting the, um...
Right.
There's a lot of changes in here, I will say that.
Yeah, um, I think the main changes, once Rory pours them up...
Just multitasking here.
Yep. Um, a lot of it was kind of cleaning some of it up and...
What was the last date on this ordinance when it was adopted?
Gosh, um, I actually do not have it off the top of my head. Do you know when this was updated?
I don't, Tom. I'd have to go back and look for sure. I, I want to... For some reason, I've got 2010 in my head, but, uh, I don't know if that's correct or not. How do you make that large?
Uh-uh.
Go ahead.
Were you gonna provide a little history, I guess Rory, as to what led you to do some of this work there?
Well, for, for the last several years, the parking lot, the main parking lot here for the courthouse has always been a, uh, item of discussion with regards to who gets, uh, parking passes and who doesn't. Um, if you recall, uh, for the last couple of years, I've, uh, kind of been sending a template, uh, memo to you with any updates with regards to any new people that have been issued parking passes. Um, but back in the early 90s, um, if you recall in that memo, um, our, uh, our parking lot, our main parking lot here kind of took a transition. Back in those days, it was primarily reserved for employees. Um, I think back in those days, we only had three spots that really weren't identified for employees. Um, since that time, uh, it's involved into, uh, more of a parking lot for, uh, for people coming to do business at the courthouse. With the exception of about 62, uh, passes that we currently have assigned to various departments. Um, I can kind of go through that with you, but I think all of you have seen this list many times. But, um, all the departments, it varies from state, uh, folks that are here at the courthouse, to, uh, various county, uh, turn, or county, uh, departments. Um, but what we did on that list is we tried to look at what was a frequent, uh, uh, person, or frequent employee parking in this lot and what was an occasional. And again, we came up with about 62 that are frequent and about 33 that are on occasion. Um, with the most of them being, majority of them being the judges. Um, we have about, uh, uh, 33, um, 22 that are frequent and 11 that are infrequent. So they kind of hold the majority of the, the passes. And then throughout the various departments, there might be four assigned or five assigned or one assigned. But, um, but anyway, since the early 90s, that's kind of how we evolved to get to where we're at now. Um, and so what, uh, what Dana and I tried to do here with the ordinance is if you look at the ordinance, it talks about criteria. And there's two different things. There's temporary parking passes and permanent parking passes. Um, and it, and it identifies, uh, it's, the statement is per the criteria, um, um, approved by the Board of Supervisors. And for the temporary, you can see here, um, we have a list of five, uh, criterias that need to be met in order to receive a, uh, a temporary parking pass. And that process works really well. Um, when somebody comes to our office and they ask for a temporary parking permit, uh, it's very easy for us to look at that criteria and, uh, determine whether or not that person meets the criteria. Um, where we struggle is on the, uh, the main parking lot, um, it identifies that there should be criteria, but there never has been any set. And so what we're proposing is to develop that criteria, um, to make that a process that's simple as, uh, as, as we do for the temporary. And so what we came up with is you'll see the list of five there, and these are just five items that we came up with just to kind of get the ball rolling.
Um, this is on page five.
So we kind of skipped ahead. We kind of jumped ahead from some of the other changes, but we'll get back to that. But if we look at this criteria, um, the first item is county employee vehicles that are frequently used to conduct county businesses, uh, per justification from the department head and approval from the majority, uh, vote from the Board of Supervisors. And so how we envision that happening would be using that document that we currently use now, uh, hand that out to whatever elected official or department head, um, uh, if they want to make that request, they fill out that document, their reasoning's why, um, then that actually goes in front of the Board of Supervisors for approval.
Is that at a meeting then?
I think in order, because we did talk to Pete early, early on on this, and, uh, we, originally, we had all five supervisors at the bottom of this document, but that's considered a vote, and so that has to be at a, at a public meeting.
I just question putting parking passes on the agenda all the time. I mean, it's, it's, I don't know, it, it seems kind of, um...
I, you know, and I, I understand what you're saying, and I think what we tried to do here is, um, we had a pretty lengthy list to begin with, and we tried to, uh, make it so it was more of, uh, the board making that decision on who's gonna get a pass and who isn't, uh, based on how they're using their personal vehicle. That's really kind of what we're looking at is, uh, for me, for an example, if I'm using my personal vehicle, what is the frequency and as a board, is that justifiable for a permit? Um, but, uh, prior to this list, we had down all the various positions, and, uh, we felt at the end of the day, um, that got pretty lengthy. Um, so again, this is just a suggestion at this point. Um, we just felt like this kind of gives the board that control to determine, you know, whether or not that person should get a pass. Um, we've also put on, uh, elected officials, um, elected official deputies, judges, and department heads. Um, so that's the list of five. Um, what we're proposing though, uh, is, is essentially keeping, um, the permits that are out there existing and kind of, uh, through, uh, uh, retirements and as people leave, um, this would be, uh, the new criteria that we would use moving forward. So we're not really proposing taking any passes away at this point. We're just proposing moving forward. Here's our criteria.
Would the temporary passes come to?
Pardon me?
Who would, if they wanted a temporary pass, like you're talking about, who would they come to?
Those would still come to our office, uh, because that criteria is pretty straightforward. Um, and again, when they come to our office, if it doesn't meet those five...
Not really, because out there, Rory, you've got temporary passes out there all the time, and some of them, I've walked through there, they're expired, and they just hang them up, so they're covered.
Well, then that's on our security to, to monitor.
They ain't got time to be going, walking way up to them and reading everything down there, because half the time, you can't even read what it says.
That's the process we have. They, they need to make time to do that.
So it's, the temporary is fine, as far as working that you know of, except for, like you said, maybe some exceptions like that.
Yeah, you got blue passes out there, and this, this lot says it's for the, um, uh, people with business in the courthouse. And you got all sorts of people that are going over to the jail every day parking here, taking up more spots than we have employees.
Yeah, and that, honestly, that's enforcement. Um, that's on us to, uh, probably enforce a lot better than we are. Uh, because we can have all of these, uh, different, uh, rules and everything in place, but unless it's enforced, um, it's, it's not going to get any better. So that's something that needs to improve. Um, and, and also in this list of updates, I don't know if you wanted to talk to that, Dana, but we, we also talked about increasing the cost for the tickets. And it's not a revenue generating idea. It's more of, uh, to eliminate, um, people from just saying, "Well, I'll pay the $5 and park in the lot. It's cheaper than putting a penny into a meter." And that does happen quite frequently. So we're proposing increasing that cost to $10.
Can we just go briefly back to the part, what jurors, and maybe, um, have the clerk of courts, um, include it in their communications with jurors about parking? That, the jurors that are, that do have a handicap permit are allowed to park here and make that clear to them?
Absolutely.
And I've had that concern brought to me a couple of times. I want to make sure the folks know
Yeah.
that if, that if you are in need of a handicap parking spot, this whole lot is open to you.
And that's the key is, and we've gotten into that situation, but that is the key, is if you do have a handicap permit, you are allowed to park anywhere in the lot. It doesn't even have to be just the handicap spot.
How do you, uh, cover the instance that we've had going on, and maybe it's still going on, where you had an employee? Well, there was a couple of them. We'll say the one that had the out-of-state plate, so you can put 1,000 tickets on there and it doesn't make any difference. They know it, and you know it.
Yep.
Uh, they're worthless. Or the other employee just takes them and pays them and, um, still parks here constantly. What's this ordinance going to do for those two situations?
The second part to that, again, is kind of what Craig talked about, enforcement. Um, you know, we do reserve the right, uh, to tow habitual violators. So we have gotten into that situation a few times where, uh, if somebody's constantly getting tickets. It identifies in this ordinance, um, that we do reserve the right to tow your vehicle.
Last year, how many toes have you done?
Uh, I don't think we did any last year. The year before that, we called the tow truck, tow truck twice. And each event, uh, the person saw the tow truck coming and ran out and moved their car before we could get a tow.
Well, I, I know personally, I know vehicles that are out there that don't have a tag on, and they're out there every day, and they're not getting ticketed, nor, um, are they, and they are still parking out there every day.
Yeah.
You mentioned enforcement, but I said enforcement would probably say the first priorities are security, the service that they provide, and then they go out and do that. So I think you could add, add additional staff, I suppose, down there, but then that's a cost to us.
Yeah.
We paid Waterloo at one time, and it wasn't cost beneficial for what we were getting. And for the enforcement, it wasn't any better than what our people do here, so we discontinued that. The biggest concern really is that anybody gets here early in the morning at, at 7:30, quarter, 8 o'clock. You can look at the parking lot out there and see how many spots are taken. And, um, uh, a lot of people that do business in the courthouse, they come over on their lunch break, or... Our hours really aren't user-friendly. Um, and what I mean by that, we closed down fairly early. When I worked at Deers, you get off at 3:30. You gotta rush down here to get to the treasurer's office, because they're closed at 4:15. And, uh, if you can't find a parking spot, so my goal's always been, um, twofold, is to make sure we have spots for the people, the taxpayers that are doing business in this building. And number two, I don't believe, a lot of cars we have out there right now that have a pass, they're there all day. They don't move, and there's no reason for them to be sitting there all day. I can understand if it's an individual that has a pass that comes in close, but to sit there all day and take that spot up, it, it just makes no sense to me. And we got quite a few of them. A lot of the state are like that. And, um, it, it just, I think we just need to kind of clear out some of these and get it open for the public so they can do their business here.
Well, I assume that's what you're kind of aiming for too. That's the goal, is just to have consistent criteria so that people know who can park in here and who's not, whether it's...
But I mean, right now, if there's a label on, "I'm a supervisor" or something like that, they, they think that's entitlement right away, and it shouldn't be. A criteria should always be, is that car gonna sit there all day? What's the reason of it? And, um, uh, unfortunately, you know, spaces are valuable, but, um, I don't know. I don't recall this discussion that much over the years until just this last two years. I, I don't recall us having it that much.
It's been a parking issue ever since I started. I assumed it was probably before, as long as I've been here.
We had a gentleman that sat out there and took care of it years ago, and then we went with the city, and then we decided to push it back on our security. But as far as proving passes, I, I, I don't recall us making that big of a deal out of it. Um, so...
I don't think we made a big deal of it. I think it's the criteria. I think we have some people in positions. I think when I asked even initially, are the positions based on tenure? Are they on position? Are they on, like you said, how often you're, you come and go in the off, in, in the building? And there was never that criteria, so it's been unfair, quite honestly, to some employees. You know, it used to be like all admin aides got them. Well, now all admin aides, don't just some do. Well, what's the criteria for that? Is it because they come and go in the parking lot or just because they're admin aides?
Somebody, unfortunately, give them one without going through the proper procedures or what have you.
Again, just look out there in the morning, and you can see all the cars that are out there, and it's where business even starts.
Um, I think, uh, that's, and that's the key. When you look at the, uh, ordinance as it is right now, it actually says per criteria, um, there is none. So I think that's our main goal, is to get that, uh, whatever that is, is, is to get something out there.
Do you use a counting truck during the day when you're working, or do you need your own vehicle?
If I can, uh, I would say probably 95% of the time, I'm using my own vehicle.
Okay.
Well, one of the criteria I noticed, I don't know, maybe you're gonna get to this yet. You talked about the, the ticket violations. I mean, obviously, you were looking at just what kinds of things could do it, but you also mentioned the, um...
Yeah, let's kind of go back through, because we, we jumped right into criteria. But I'll let Dana kind of talk about the, uh, the other items that are kind of significant here.
Um, so we're going back to ticket violation?
Or whatever you want, however you want to do it. I just, you're gonna get there, so I didn't mean to interrupt your work.
Other than taking a whole lot more time today, why don't we table this for a week and everybody get a good look at it and, uh, voice their concerns back to you, Dana?
Okay.
And so we, yeah, because I didn't see this, uh, 60 minutes in there either. Is that in there?
That one's, that's what I was just about to bring up on this page, on page three, I believe.
Moving it from 30 minutes out of the parking lot to 60, because on them different days, when they come in to pay their taxes or whatever. But Rita's helped solve that problem a little bit with her, her new idea of putting a deal out in the hallway for the people that got the checks. And people are aware on the side of the building that that, that's there too, that there's been different people come in, and I seen they had a check in their hand, like, in the line song, and I told them to go back outside, just drop it in the box.
Rory's office has got it more stabilized, so that, uh, I was going to ask you guys afterwards to see if I could place it on the lobby itself or if it had to stay in the office area. So that's something I was gonna just discuss on...
See, a few years ago, uh, engineering was parking all their vehicles in the lot, and we moved them over to the spot where they're at now, which relieves some of them. You occasionally see them in our lot during the day, but I think that's here for a, a department meeting or something, and then they're usually gone.
Yeah, that's Monday, is Kathy still here?
My, my concern and my goal is to open up as much as we can of that lot for the public, uh, because, um, sometimes we can get a little confusing around here and busy, and it takes longer than they think. But ticket-wise, you're not really writing that many tickets, I don't think, compared to the past. Now, I don't know if that's enforcement or if the different people we have, but...
We, we saw a significant reduction, um, with, uh, the change in, uh, personnel down there at first. It is now getting back up to those numbers again.
But winter's coming, and it's hard to have them out there when it's 20 below zero, it's snowing, and you don't have the lines. You don't see the lines or everything, so it's just kind of have to roll with it, um, as it goes, I guess.
I guess I would say, after we do adopt this new criteria, I'd rather just clear everybody out. I know it'll take, it'll be kind of time-consuming. Um, clear everybody out and make sure they all meet the new criteria to get the parking out there.
That is something that we...
Yeah.
You mean, just at least review them all at least?
Because I think a lot of these policy things will solve it, but we won't feel the effect of it being solved for a number of years as we're waiting for retirements and such.
So that is something you guys would want to do instead of clear, um...
Well, I, I do know, you know, looking at the list, I see we got a couple of administrative aides. We have, we have one in our office that doesn't park in this lot, so, you know, it's a reasoning for them.
Well, the reasoning is that we want to be fair and equitable to everybody. If just because you're an admin aide, then all admin aides, forget it.
Yeah.
Because there's certain admin aides that leave.
Now, I do know in Rory's office, Abby, but Abby does leave the office and goes to Pine Crest for enforcement in other areas.
And so based off this proposed criteria, then that would be a prime example of me filling out, well, the form, saying, "Here's the reasons why I would like to see this as a, uh, parking pass," and then the board would have to make that, uh, decision.
Rita, you had your hand.
I do want to ask too, with this criteria, are you going to also have where the locations for employees to all park at? What, what is the, the choices that they will have other than the one that's behind the probation building? Uh, because I know that many come in saying they're already parking down the streets on the residential property, so... And that's how it was back in the 70s. We parked on residential streets. So I just wanted to ask too, that if you could have that part of it as to a direction of where employees can all park and be safe and also be, uh, uh, appropriate for the...
It, it always has been a problem, Rita, and it probably always will.
Yeah.
The only thing I will say is, if you look at our employment numbers at the courthouse, they haven't changed much over the last 10, 12, 14 years. If anything, I think we're a little low right now compared to where they were. So, y- you know, it's, it's a problem that we've been looking at for years, and there really isn't a, a good solution, because there's nothing around us that we can get our hands on. We've been looking at different areas. We've been looking at Waterloo, obtaining some more of this over here, and, um, it's...
A lot of concerns too, that I hear from employees and not just my office.
Yeah, we under, yeah, we understand that.
The state office workers were parked there too, and it, it's been a, a discussion, and I understand.
It has.
I mean, I've been here how many years, and it's always been an issue.
Yeah.
So I understand that, but if that could be also at least some direction as to what is even available for the county, uh, you know, it, that site that's, um, the city bought the property Salvation Army, or whenever it was over there. I know some are parking in the parking lot over there, and I don't even know if that's even...
It's, it's sold, yeah, the city, I think, has probably already run us out of there. I could be wrong.
Just to give you an idea, I mean, we're, we're, uh, when you look at our total employees, including state, uh, for this facility, we're about 120 parking stalls deficient. Um, so that's what we're looking at, um, with the, taking into account the parking lots that we oversee. Uh, that leaves us with about 120, uh, employees. That leaves us with about a hundred and twenty employees if we had everybody show up on that particular day.
You see, the Salvation Army one, Rita, they'd park on this side.
Yeah.
But none of the employees would park on the other side.
They don't know if they can or not.
No, they said it was too far and they didn't want their car over there, so they wanted it on this side. So I don't know what's changed since Waterloo bought it. I don't think we're over there anymore.
Well, and we mentioned too about being realistic about people parking and having to park in the streets. I said, we need to have, obviously, parking out here for the clients, for the customers, our clients, but we don't want to just force everybody parking in the streets as well and saying like, okay, just everybody get out and have this lot empty.
I said it'll take somebody to get killed before we come up with a solid solution. And there's a lot of solutions that Frank and I were working on that over there across the street and the city just happened to get lucky and buy it out from underneath us.
Well, there is an option. We could probably, if we wanted to look seriously at purchasing property, we can do that. We, yeah, I know, I don't mean we want to. I just said, we talk about...
Unfortunately, all the properties got buildings on them, contaminated buildings and there's tanks in the ground and it'll be very high expensive parking spots, let's put it that way.
So if there is something, like if there is a piece of property that the city of Waterloo is willing to kind of work a deal out with us, can we, I mean, can we pursue that?
Well, the board will pursue that.
I understand, the board does. But is that something that can be brought up again because if...
Well, I think the board is constantly, we do have a lot right up the street. Waterloo thinks they own it, but they don't.
Right.
And...
But is that a good...
But our employees aren't gonna park there. They're not gonna walk from that corner down here.
Not too many years ago, we were looking at the ramps and everything else too. I know that was even since I've been here and I think that was unrealistic.
I think the best solution is, and they'll never let it go probably, but work with them on the parking lot over here.
Okay.
The lot we gave them in exchange for some other things, we should have kept that in hindsight. We've inquired about that. So it's a discussion, Dana, that the board will continue to have, but it'll have to come from the board, not any committee or anything.
I think there have been some kind of shifting attitudes about how willing people are to walk a little bit. And so there is a parking garage that is just over two blocks away. I doubt that it's at capacity. And maybe there's a, that we could pursue a county employee rate for that lot.
That was brought up before too, Chris. You're talking about the one right up here.
Yeah, and I'll add to that. The point I wanted to make is, first of all, I'll never take a permit because I feel that frees up a space for others. I need to walk. The city garage, the city ramp, they just installed cameras. Every time I've utilized it, there was more than enough space. So my plan is to park down there or bike. So I think part of this is educational for employees and some citizens. And I do, I just noticed an error under violations, section C three. It needs to conform with section C one. So there are some corrections we need to make, but overall, I like it.
Oh, I see what the cost, the prices.
Certainly, things could have changed. This report that I generated back in two thousand and twelve, the history parking ramp, had rooftop spots available only. They were at that time willing to work out a discount with us. Again, this is quite old, but, you know, so there are some possibilities there with regards to the ramps that may...
Yeah, in the winter, I know, we'd want to go up on top.
And I think since that time, the city has contracted out management of those. And, you know, so it's maybe possible that, so that there'd be an added benefit to employees that did that, that their parking permit would be good at all the other city lots as well. So they'd have at least some kind of added bonus to... They gotta walk a little bit every day to work, but when they're coming downtown to an event, they can park in all these other garages as well.
Because they are underutilized.
Yes, they are.
Yeah.
The parking ramps?
Yes.
That's why I was surprised when you said it was full except for the top.
And they're adding cameras.
I think they just wanted to give us the top, not have us in the middle.
That could have been too.
You want the snow to fall on us.
You mentioned that, are you gonna talk on the timing, the time limits?
For this, changing the thirty minutes, sixty minutes? That was one of the changes that we did have in here, is just changing the courthouse parking lot from thirty minutes to sixty, just to give a little, or give a little bit more time to conduct business here at the courthouse.
I think overall, if it was taking them twenty minutes, you know, they'll probably still take twenty minutes. Sixty minutes would probably be the extreme, I think. Passports, waiting in line for that. Even with the lines in the treasurer's office, they get through there fairly quick. But I don't think it'd make any difference going to sixty minutes. How...
What are your thoughts on that, I guess?
We get a lot of feedback from, and it's kind of, it comes in spurts, it seems like. But we will get feedback that thirty minutes is not near enough time to do, to stand in line in the treasurer's department on a Monday. But what we do is we try to evaluate that with the security guards that we have.
I was gonna say, you're talking twice a year.
Yeah, when we're busy, we just won't go out and mark tires. Kind of treat it like we do with the board supervisors' meetings on Tuesday, as it states in here. I think it defines a period of time that they don't go out and chalk tires. We've done that before in certain cases when we noticed that it's a busy day. But there again, that's not in the ordinance. What we're trying to do is just really define a procedure that we can follow and...
I think our biggest abusers are people that actually go to court, attend the court and leave their cars out here all day only when they break for lunch and stuff. So if people are doing business here, they're gonna come in and get it and get out if they can get a spot. And there are some days where you have to drive around a little bit, but...
And I don't know, if we went to sixty minutes, you know, possibly that might give us a little more, that may help the enforcement part of it. If it wasn't every half hour, if it was sixty minutes, it might be more realistic that the guards could break away and get out and actually write tickets rather than a half hour. So it just may kind of bring things into more of a realistic goal.
I see most of the people that really come to visit us or would go to the engineer's office or I guess even your pre-bid meetings and that type of thing, they're gonna be here longer than thirty minutes, obviously. People that come to do their business are gonna be in and out. I don't think they want to be here any longer than they have to be.
I know at the recorder's office, I didn't mean to interrupt you, I'm sorry. I know at the recorder's office, so there's some times where it does take a little bit longer, especially passports. Passports, marriage license, so that might be something when we table this, to kind of ask the recorder's office generally, how long do you have somebody here?
I think the sixty minutes probably wouldn't be a bad idea. I'm not really sold on raising the fee to our people to come in and use this.
You probably don't have any numbers that would really show or that you really base that on, what that would do if you did.
No, really, again, the real reason for that is to try to deter the people that just want to pay the five dollar ticket every day.
Do you, do you think you have a lot of abusers like that? I mean, what gives you that inclination that we've got a lot that'll do that?
Based on the tickets.
Are they workers?
We see a lot of repeat tickets.
If they're workers, they should be towed rather than ticketed.
That's what I mean. I mean, the way to combat that is to increase our enforcement and that's on us to probably look at that a little harder and start towing. Last thing I like to do is tow employees' cars, so we try to work with them. We try, we'll send a letter to them, we'll send a letter to their supervisor or department head. We've sent letters to judges before on court reporters, just saying, hey, this is what's going on. Please get it corrected or we will tow you. And only a handful of times have we ever gotten to the extreme point of trying to tow somebody. It's just something we don't really want to have to do, but that we do reserve that right.
So all of these measures you think would be helpful? I mean, would help do what you would like to see done, but like criteria, sounds like that's kind of critical from helping the most or setting it.
Is a handicap, is that a state fine? I mean, is there already a fine for handicap rather than we impose what we want to?
We actually issue those tickets for...
Yeah, I understand that, but isn't there a set fee already?
The amount is set by the state and ours is actually, needs to be increased to two hundred.
So you're saying the state's two hundred?
Yes. You go to any parking lot nowadays, I believe it is up to...
Okay, I'm just curious. Well, obviously, we're not going to approve this today. It's on for discussion only and I think we've had some good...
The state is currently two hundred, we're still at a hundred, so we're...
If you give a ticket here, does that money go to the state or the county?
That money goes to...
The county.
The treasures who, where it goes from there, I'm not exact. The general.
So all tickets go, go to her?
We collect it. And then it goes to the general fund.
Okay. Sorry to interrupt.
It's okay.
But that's a good question.
Good information, Grant.
Well, you said you just, you were kind of getting this out there for us for feedback and...
Yeah. And that's what this is about. It's a, it's a criteria that was suggested. It's by no means set in stone, obviously, because you have to approve it.
Well, if anything, it updates in the ordinance. It's probably been a few years since it's been updated. And I'm sure we're gonna find some more things in here too that need corrected. So what we can do is, is, it's a problem we've had for quite a while. Can we kind of go over this as a board and then put it back on in a couple of weeks if that works? And it don't necessarily have to be for adoption. It could be for discussion or it can be for adoption. So whatever the board chooses to do.
I know I would like to kind of meet with some of you like individually too, just to see if you have any more feedback for it or if you have any ideas, especially now that Chris brought up the parking ramps or possibly even talking to the city of Waterloo for the parking lots over there. So, I mean, for Salvation, for Salvation Army. I don't know, is there anything that you would want to have feedback on for the board?
Again, my, for me, the biggest thing is we, you know, the ordinance states criteria that's not there. So I think we just need to get that out.
Let's, I think that's a separate issue right here. Let's get this ordinance approved, language approved and then ordinance adopted. And then the board can have discussion with Waterloo. We have in the past. I mean, this is something that's been going on for years, so it's nothing new. But I think it should come from the board anyway, Dana, any discussion. So we'll continue to have that with Waterloo, but, you know, my dealings with them in the past, sometimes it's costly for the county.
So the policy or the criteria and the ordinance is really what we want to focus on and is...
I think we ought to get this ordinance adopted out of the way and hopefully, there's things in here that, I don't want to get to the point of changing ordinance every other week. So I don't know if everything should be in here, if some should be in a policy. You see what I'm saying? But...
But the criteria isn't a part of the ordinance?
It's part of the ordinance, yes.
You want to make it, that's if you want to make it part of the ordinance.
Part of the reason it's under an ordinance is because we're actually issuing citations.
The money part of it.
Going in front of a judge.
The temporary is, but the permanent was never, so we needed to clarify that.
The temporary and permanent, all of it is under ordinance.
But we just need to make sure if this is what we want.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there anything else?
Going back to the guards going out in the parking lot, the guards are doing their job. I don't want to hear them being bashed again. They're doing their job. They turn in a record once a month of how many tickets they write. And it's amazing the stuff they stop from coming in here. Guy had a little gun on him the other day.
Oh, I don't think it's that great. I think it's just that they get busy.
I didn't bash him either.
We said the enforcement's on us.
There weren't necessary.
Well, enforcement's on us and it is probably...
I look at that as me because, you know, there's, ultimately, we kind of oversight, you know, for those guards. Their tickets have gone up. There were eighty-three tickets last month. I mean, there was a point there when the, when the, one of the longtime guards had left, that it had dropped down significantly, but it is coming back up.
Well, I think they have portions sometimes of the day where it's difficult to get out there. So even if there is somebody out there that's abusing it, it's...
And they've cycled through a couple of employees here recently. So, no, it's not that my job is to do whatever I can to help them get out there and if it's talking to their office to help enforce that, that's...
We've done that.
Yeah.
Okay then. Does that sound good, everybody? And we'll make sure this stays fresh and we'll continue on. Maybe in a couple of weeks, we can put it back on, so...
Thanks for the work.
And in the meantime, there probably are gonna be more. There's a lot of changes, so I'm sure there's gonna be a lot of more questions.
I know you've said you worked for months, but I know it's gone on for longer than that.
It's not a consistent...
No, not daily, but yeah. Thank you.
Okay, well, thanks a lot, appreciate it.
Yeah.
Okay, item L is a discussion. We've got an update on the solar project is recommended by the alternative energy. Chris, I think you put this back on?
No. I think it was that we were gonna have it on every other week.
Okay, that's fine.
I think that's what happened, yeah.
You got anything, any updates on this, Rory?
Yep, I'm gonna go through just a few of them here with you. If I can get my stuff opened up here.
I've got a few questions once we get started, Rory, maybe you'll cover them with what you're going through.
Okay.
And I know there were some questions last time on spending, different options.
Yeah.
And...
PPAs versus the cash.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to talk about today. So this is a...
Well, and I said then, I wasn't trying to slow the process down at all, but I was just wanting to make sure that if there was an advantage or anything...
Rory, click slideshow over at the top there. And then the far left, start from beginning.
Okay, here we go. All right, this is the original, our point that I had presented, I don't know, a few weeks back. At that time, we talked about a purchase price. And there was a couple, there was some feedback during that meeting. I think one of it was to look at what a power purchase agreement would look like under the same eight facilities or eight sites. I did finally get some information back from the vendor that we've been working with and I'm just gonna scroll down to that. This is the power purchase, if you recall, under all eight facilities. I think we came in at one point two million, a little over one point two million. That's if we were to purchase these solar panels outright. Then we also identified a forty-year or twenty-five-year picture of what that savings would look like or that return in that investment would look like and then also a forty-year.
What are the options for paying?
Basically, we have the first option, which is this one, purchase it outright.
Pay outright.
The second option, which would be a power purchase agreement. And does everybody understand what that power purchase agreement means basically? Is there's a third party that owns and operates the solar panels? Then we, as a host, customer, provide them the land or the space to put those panels on and then we essentially pay them for our power.
So long-term, what's the cost as compared to the one point two that we initially buy them?
All right, so if you look at, these are just the different sites. So this is a current PPA at three point seven eight percent inflation rate and that's a key number. I've got one that shows three point seven eight and then I've also got one which just came in this morning at two percent. They're not a hundred percent sure, they can do two percent, but I'll show you the difference between the two and it's pretty, pretty significant, yeah. So as you look at the PPA here, obviously...
We can't see that, Rory.
I can't see it.
Even me.
You're close.
There you go.
There you go, come up there.
Okay. So as you can see, oh, this is the wrong one. Hold on here. Let me make it bigger. Sorry. I am not sure how to make that bigger. You still can't see it?
That's better there.
You just, you can scroll down.
Okay, I'll just do that then.
You scroll down or scroll up depending on where your sheet is.
Okay, so again, this one is looking at a power purchase agreement at three point seven eight percent as our inflation rate. So as you can see, Pinecrest is... Um, so as you can see, Pinecrest, uh, is, and the reason that you see negatives down here at the bottom is, and I think we kind of talked this, uh, through, uh, the last go around, and then when Chuck was here with Mid-American, our rates are, uh, historically low, um, here in this area, and, uh, we kind of beat that one, uh, uh, the last time we got together. But it's pretty evident here, uh, looking at the size of the Pinecrest, you're looking at, uh, cash gain over the PPA life, um, which is twenty-five years of negative, uh, one hundred and seventy-four thousand. Each site beyond that, which is much smaller, obviously, it's not quite as extensive of a, of a loss. In fact, when you look at some of the even smaller ones, you'll see that we actually are looking at, well, even up here, Longfellow, uh, you're looking at, uh, savings. But keep in mind, that sixteen thousand for Longfellow is over twenty-five years, uh, so that's a long period of time to be able to see that type of savings.
James, have you been on or working with this?
I, I've kept.
My, my question really is, uh, is there two options, pay outright and then also the pop, the, what'd you call it?
Power purchase.
Power purch, is that the two options the county has?
Yes.
Have you done work on them? What's beneficial to the county?
In all honesty, when, when we start looking at these power purchase agreements, they just, they're not advantageous for us. Um, we're, we're paying someone more money.
I agree.
Than what we are going to, I mean, our, our cost savings really isn't as, as much as we would like it to be, you know? Uh, my second question is, and I've kind of brought it up to a few of you, is, would we be even looking at this project as a power purchase agreement if we, you know, if we weren't looking to invest an addition, you know, additional dollars into the county?
Well, I think country view gives us the advantage of having the cash, but we probably would have looked at power purchase agreements if we were going to do it at all.
The thing about the power purchase agreement is, uh, you don't have to come up with that upfront capital, uh, to purchase these. Um, there is tax incentives for, uh, the, uh, the companies that you work with, um, that they take advantage of, and so they're putting these on your site with no upfront money. But we're not, as you can see here, after twenty-five years, we've lost a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. So the power purchase agreement really becomes more of a, um, uh, carbon footprint, uh, reduction. Uh, if you want to do this, uh, solar panels to reduce your carbon footprint, and that's your, uh, that's your main objective, then, uh, the, the power purchase agreement might be a better fit.
I, I think that this is a good option for, for communities that are not in as strong of a financial position as we are. You know, because it, because it is getting them on the path of doing the right thing and investing in clean energy. Uh, but since we do have a strong financial position, I think that the, if I remember correctly, over the twenty-five years, we would actually generate a million and a half dollars versus losing a hundred and forty-four.
So when you buy it outright, you're, you're not, I mean, your, your utility bills drop dramatically, so that's, that's where, that's right. So, so you're actually starting to chip into that initial investment right away, whereas, you know, yeah. So over, over twenty-five years, I mean, you're essentially netting a positive number rather than a negative.
Fourteen, fifteen years before you decide.
Right.
And so, yeah.
Yeah, the, the payback with the cash purchase ranges from anywhere from fourteen to sixteen years. Um, our annual electrical cost, as it sits right now, is right around sixty-three, sixty-four thousand dollars a year. Um, we would still have a meter fee at, uh, like a hundred and twenty dollars a month per site, um, but that would, uh, bring our annual savings down to about sixty-two, sixty-three thousand dollars. Uh, so over a twenty-five-year period of time, which is the warranty period of the solar panels, yeah, you would see, uh, a cash gain. You would expect to see about one point four.
Warranty, uh, different on, uh, either purchase?
The power purchase agreement, uh, as you're in that agreement, say that seven years, if that's what the board would choose to go out, would be, seven years is the, uh, minimum that you can go before you buy out the panels. During that period of time, there would be no cost to you for maintenance, because, uh, we would not own the system. Say after seven years, if we want to buy back the system, and, and that cost would have to be negotiated in RFP, um, at that point, then you would, uh, uh, have to purchase a maintenance agreement.
So if we buy it outright, we still have warranty, correct?
Yeah. If you purchase it outright, you get the twenty-five-year warranty, yeah.
Now, the other question, I had a couple of questions. The other one is, it's broken out, it's estimated, and that's an estimate, about one point two million for the total project.
Yeah.
Is that, it's broken out, I think I've seen it already, from the different buildings?
Yeah, right here.
I mean, is, I'm, I'm questioning, Pinecrest is a good candidate, but I'm questioning, are the other smaller ones worth for what you're going to save on them, or is it just saying we're going to put solars and make them green?
You could certainly question, uh, a place like, say, the Sheriff's Training Range, because that facility is so efficient as it sits right now. You'll see right there, you're looking at a nine thousand dollar investment. Um, it's going to take you over sixteen years to get that payback.
That don't make sense, really.
Uh, so that might be one, and I think we had talked about that earlier on even, is pulling that one off, if it came down to it. And then as you go to the left, Elk Run Shop, uh, you're looking at almost, uh, eighteen thousand dollar investment, but you got a fourteen-year payback, um, and so forth. So.
Pinecrest is just the.
Well, Pinecrest is the big one.
Yeah, and you still, with Pinecrest, you got a fourteen and a half year payback, um, but your, your, uh, annual cost is forty-eight thousand dollars.
Quite a bit larger scale.
So you're, you're looking at saving, you know, almost, uh, forty-eight thousand dollars a, a year.
Okay.
Electrical cost.
And then, um, uh, we did check on insurance. There is an increase on insurance?
Uh, yeah, I believe Dana sent that out to you, if I remember right. I want to say it was eighteen hundred a year.
Okay.
Um, and I did do some checking also on, uh, fencing.
Okay, that was the other question, fencing.
What we can, uh, expect to pay, I would, I would put us in the realm of about, uh, fifteen thousand dollars, uh, for a commercial, uh, galvanized, uh, chain link fence.
You were putting that in the bid, I think, weren't you?
I would put that in the RFP, yes.
Did you, uh, check with Waterloo on zoning and everything for that type of fence in that area?
Uh, I have not, no.
Because I'm assuming you're talking the higher fence?
Uh, what I estimated was a six-foot fence. Um, a ten-foot fence, you can add about another ten percent on top of that. Um, it goes up quite a bit when you get over six foot in cost.
Okay.
Um, and that's something we would have to look at. I would imagine that, uh, contractors would have some recommendations on that.
And if the panels are damaged, that's our cost?
Uh, for the, uh, uh, if they're vandalized, then that would be, uh, our, our cost, or we turn it into insurance, but keep in mind.
How that works.
We got a fifty thousand dollar deductible, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I think it is very important to try to protect these with, uh, some sort of fencing.
Go ahead. I was going to say, so, um, I know the alternative energy committee's looked at this for quite some time, and was there, is there a recommendation to do all the facilities that are present up there? It was all eight? Okay.
Yeah, as a committee, that was our recommendation, just as you see this power, this purchase agreement, yes.
With the footprint.
With the footprint as well as the.
Yeah.
What's Pinecrest by itself?
Uh, right here, it's, uh, estimated cost for that array is nine hundred and forty-four thousand.
Nine forty-four.
And, uh, cash gain over twenty-five years is a little over a million. Over forty years, and keep in mind, too, the forty-year was the expected life.
Looking at fifty, so you're looking at about a quarter of a million for the other ones total, if I'm looking at that right?
Yeah.
You know, I, I'm, I'm really, Pinecrest is a perfect candidate. I feel, I'm still not sold on the other ones. I just don't know if it's a smart business deal. I don't know if James had a chance to look at all that, too. Unless it's one of those where you say, well, we went green on those buildings and.
Yeah, that's really, I mean, that's, that's really kind of the decision that, you know, you guys, it's, it's extremely advantageous for Pinecrest.
I, I agree a hundred percent.
So it's, the, the other thing, too, is that could be the guinea pig, you know? You could Pinecrest and work everybody else in.
I'm sure we're going to learn from that project, because, you know, there's a lot of, I think, unforeseen costs, but we'll, we won't know until we get into it.
That's why Hartman kind of did what they did.
Yeah.
Kind of from the educational standpoint, they wanted to utilize it, but also that they're.
And it is a large building that we're utilizing it.
When I was talking to Rory about the Sheriff Training Range, I mean, that's, that, that's a perfect one to just knock off there, um, because there's, I mean, I think, what, you're saving a hundred and some dollars a month? I mean, it's, it's.
For, uh, almost a ten thousand dollar investment.
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's, it's three hundred, but you still have to have that meter hookup, so, so it's still like a hundred and fifty dollars for the meter hookup. So, I mean, I think it was like one sixty that you're saving every month, and it's just, it's not advantageous, so it is a very efficient building, but.
I guess they all do have a payoff period within the warranty period, so that, so that none of them are real, uh, bad deals. Um, but I would, but, but as everybody said, Pinecrest is where we get the biggest environmental impact and the biggest financial impact, so. I mean, I would recommend that we move forward with all these on there, but, but knowing that, that Pinecrest, to me, is, is something we've, we've got to do. It is too good of an opportunity.
Yeah, I agree. I support Pinecrest. The others, I'm not so sure.
I'd, I'd go as far as Elk Run Shop, and if the sheriff wants his, it comes out of his money, so.
Well, that's not even feasible really by looking at it, you're not saving.
You mean having Elk Run Shop?
It's a larger. Yeah, and I would support that, too.
Yeah.
Yes, me too.
I think Kathy's new buildings, I definitely want to do that, you know, as long as they're brand new, you know, update them right away, and that way they'd be saving money from the beginning.
Is the insurance cost, uh, was that estimated for all buildings?
Yes, it was.
Okay.
Um, and back to that PPA, just kind of keep in mind, too, the reason that, uh, if you look at the, uh, cost per kilowatt, um, obviously, when you look at Pinecrest, it's a larger facility, so you're using more power, so that cost per kilowatt is, is lower, which, when you, when you look at it from a power purchase agreement, that actually hurts you, uh, because, um, uh, of the larger facility and the lower cost of electricity, the, the, uh, solar manufacturer, the solar supplier, uh, has to, uh, actually charge you more in order to pay for that equipment. So that's why you see that larger percentage reduction on Pinecrest. But then as you go to the smaller locations, that cost per kilowatt actually goes up, where then the power purchase starts making more sense, if that helps.
The Elk Run Shop, is that our Dunkerton one on Dunkerton Road?
Yes.
Why would it be Elk Run?
That's what we call it, the Elk Run Shop. It's on Elk Run Road and Dunkerton Road.
But it's, okay.
I guess the, the point, the point I wanted to make with the power purchase is we could get creative if we wanted to look at Pinecrest as a cash purchase, uh, site, and then maybe look at the other smaller sites under a power purchase.
I'd rather we go.
Get creative.
I'd rather we go one way or the other.
Yeah.
Anyway, board, where do you want to go with this, board? Then we've seen it twice in front of us. Do you want to, to, uh, bring some action items? The first action item would be, uh, preparing, authorization, prepare an RFP, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
And let him prepare that, and then, um, uh, next action would be sending it out, and then we go from there, one step at a time.
Yeah, I think getting an RFP out for everything up to the Elk Run Shop is, would be a good way to go.
I agree.
And put that on the agenda for next week.
Yes.
So you two have.
Well, if they have it ready, Chris, I don't know if they're going to have that RFP ready.
Or do we have to put it on the agenda to ask, ask for the RFP to go?
Yeah.
It'll be a public hearing project.
For the contract, not the RFP?
Well, we just have to go through the steps that we normally would in a public hearing, so we would put it in front of the board to request a, a public hearing.
Right.
Is that, I think that's what you're trying to.
Do we do that, Pete, for an RFP?
Yeah.
I think so.
Okay. Well, let's, let's start the process. I mean, there's a few steps we're going to have to go through, plus, uh, the, uh, letting out the RFP, the timeframe and so forth, and, um, got to start somewhere.
Yep, sounds good.
Okay.
Well, Kathy and Mike, I think you both have something to say. You were on the committee, right, too, as well?
Yeah, and the only other thing that I would say, uh, at least from conservation standpoint, but I think it, it could hold true with some of these other things, we chase dollars all over the place. We write grants, uh, all the time on trying to find outside funding. Um, we deal with private funding sources, and things like this sometimes look really good in grant, when you're writing a grant on an application and things like that. And we can step up and say our headquarters are solar powered and our nature center's solar powered, um, so maybe the, the return isn't huge on a building like the headquarters at Conservation, but if we were able to use that information to come up with any type of a grant, you may, well, we can't put our finger on it, it's not black and white, but it may be part of what helps us get a fifty thousand dollar grant or something else. Then the payoff's quite large, and once again, we've never identified that, but that's out there, and, and as you write grants, as, as people know, anything like this we can put in those, those grants, you know, are, are really good.
Your facility?
Just something to think about.
Your facility was on there?
Yeah.
I don't know, we're going to a little more discussion on that.
Well, I think the other, the other good thing about Conservation Headquarters, it is a place that the public interacts with as well, and so going for the public ed, education aspect is really good, too.
You know what you got to do, Rory?
I just want to second what Chris said, that this should apply to all buildings. The Sheriff's Shooting Range, yes, it's a, it's a smaller facility. You're paying almost twice as much for electricity there today as you're, it's, it was seventy-nine cents, I think, versus the forty-four, point four, oh-four cents at Pinecrest. So it, yes, I know it's a much sk, smaller scale of a building, but it's also a brand-new building, so it makes a lot of sense to put something on top of the roof. The roof is going to last for forty years.
Have you had discussion with the sheriff on this?
No, I mean, I would say the same thing about my, my, my building.
Oh, I understand that, but I'm saying the sheriff, but has he had any discussion on this? Plus the fact that money would have to come from the sheriff, from his.
I'm just talking about economies of scale to get better prices on all of these solar panels for the county, I think, would be realized if we did all the buildings.
Rory, you might want to have some discussion with him first. I mean, um, and then also the funding, and that's going to have to come from his part, obviously.
Is that something that the, the review, the committee considered, I guess, economies of scale, like the benefit of us doing eight now and, or six or five?
I think it was something we definitely consider, and as Kathy's saying, there's, there's an economic and environmental benefit to all these buildings. There's even, even when you look at some of the buildings that we're not proposing, there is still an economic benefit that it just took a lot longer to get there. But I think, is, I don't want to hold this up at all, so I propose that we move forward with some of that next week's, next week's agenda, going up to the Elk Run Shop, but then still, um, have some conversations with the sheriff, um, about, about the shooting range as well, because, because there's, there's, the economic benefits there on all these ones that we're proposing.
Well, my question on the sheriff's facility is the current funding cost, where does that come from?
Comes from his, wherever he's getting his money from right now, because the statement was made that no tax dollars be spent out there, so. You'd almost have to check with him on his funding and so forth. I don't know what it was. It wasn't very much, was it?
I think it was just a little over nine thousand, was it?
Then again, that's something you're going to have to have, you know, you just can't arbitrarily throw that on the list. But, uh, Dan, that would be my thinking on where the funds would come from.
So we're at seven buildings and possibly eight.
I would move ahead with the others and.
Let's move on the other seven like we started out or said earlier, and, and discussion.
Well, yeah, I guess we vote on it, I suppose, with that.
We can always add a, I mean, it's just an amendment to the, um, all we're doing next week, I'm assuming, is starting the, uh, procedure, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
So if there's any change to me now, next week, we can do that, too, okay?
Yep.
Okay, Rory, you got her?
Thanks very much.
Thank you, board.
Thank you, Rory, for all your work on this.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, and everybody else who was on that. Okay. Moving on to item eleven, this is a closed session. This is resolution, in pursuit to the provisions of the Iowa Open Meetings Law, the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors shall proceed into closed session. The time is ten fifty, and this is discuss strategy in the matter of Grant and Annette Duncan versus Blackhawk County. I will code two one twenty-five one C. Do I have a motion in here?
Second.
Roll call, please. Valen?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we are back into an open session. They need a motion to adjourn the board of supervisors' meeting closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And resolution C is to proceed or not to proceed with litigation. Proceeding would be taking the advice and paying it, would that be correct, Pete?
No, just simply a, a resolution to proceed with the litigation is sufficient. I don't think you need to say, I don't think you need to say anything else.
Well, what's proceed mean?
The, continue to deal with this litigation, continue to defend the litigation.
Okay, but if the board wanted to settle it?
We're not doing that this time.
Well, if you were going to settle it, then, then you would need to have something specific.
I see what you're saying.
You need to specifically state that.
I thought that's why she put proceed, not proceed. Not proceed would give me the idea it was, we were settling it, and proceed means we're not. But anyway, either way, the motion is clear, whoever makes it?
Yes.
Okay, and who didn't?
I'm, I'm still not clear.
I'm not either.
All right. If, if, if you pass a motion to proceed with the litigation, you're not discussing the settlement issue. Your, your motion is to continue on with defending the claim that has been made against Blackhawk County.
Okay.
Now, if you're not comfortable with that, if you want to be more specific, then you could specifically say that the board doesn't, declines settlement proposals in this matter and proceeds with the litigation.
I agree with that.
You do that, however, you're going to have to be discussing with the, with the press what that settlement figure was.
I'm fine with that.
Right.
It's still not clear, but who made the motion?
Nobody yet.
Huh?
Nobody has yet.
No, I think we're just trying to make sure we're clear.
Am I not doing a good job of explaining this to them?
Is there a motion that they could make that would be not quite as conclusive, so they would be saying that they haven't decided whether they're going to defend this or not?
And that would be proceed with.
Because wasn't he going to get back to us with more information?
Yeah, with John.
You know, I, I see where proceed or not proceed could be pretty ambiguous.
It is for me, yeah.
So could they put more specific language in?
Yeah. Then I think you need to say that the board turns down the settlement proposals that have been made and desires to proceed with the litigation.
I would make that motion.
And I would second it.
Does that help, Grant?
Yes.
Grant, clear with that in the minutes?
We'll see.
Okay.
So you.
Linda will let you know next week.
You are, you are turning down the settlement proposal and proceeding with litigation to defend.
Yes.
Or further talks, same thing.
Or further talks. Is that your motion?
Well, he was going to get back with us. He was going to go to ICAP.
Well, see, that, that's why I, I want to know if, if you want to be clear that you're, you're not making a final decision.
Oh, no, wait a minute. Yeah, I, I think the only thing he's going to get back to you from ICAP is whether ICAP is going to contact you directly about the hammer clause.
Okay.
I think that the settlement of this matter is not going to occur at this point. And you haven't given any kind of indication at all that you are willing to discuss settlement in the future.
Okay, so we're back to the motion that Dan made.
I want to stand on that motion.
And that was two.
Okay?
Okay, I'm going to write something down here.
Please do, yeah.
And I'm going to read it back to you, okay?
All right.
Be it hereby resolved to, to not accept the proposed settlement?
Yes, and proceed with proposed litigation.
With litigation.